Good evening, welcome to the July Board Meeting. We have two firsts tonight. The first first is it's the first month of the new fiscal school year. And our second first is it's the first meeting for our new Superintendent, Mrs. Strike. So, good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Can we rise and do a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Donna Delaney, here.
Rachel Davies, here.
Robert DiNperio, here.
Donna Thomas, here.
Richard Mason, here.
Verification meeting notice.
It was submitted to the leader, but we missed the early deadline for 4th of July, so they posted it online for the leader. And because it did not make it into the leader, we also put it at the Lake Mills Library, the post office, the banks, Bank of Lake Mills, Greenwood State Bank, and it was on the school website.
All right, thank you. And any agenda revisions? I don't think there are any, so could we have approval?
I'll move approval of the agenda.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same side? Okay, that passes unanimously. Community input.
Sandy Whistler's here tonight.
Mrs. Whistler, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sandy Whistler. My address is 303 Moss Street, and I'm here tonight to give you a very special invitation. You've probably have heard of the Wisconsin Public Education Network, Citizen Advocates for Public Education as part of that network, and in June, the network held its regular meeting here in Lake Mills at the elementary school. I want to thank Dr. Mason for attending that event. And the network connects education advocates and professionals from across the state who support and promote public education in Wisconsin. Tonight, I'd like to invite you to attend the Second Annual Summer Education Summit, which is being hosted by the Wisconsin Public Education Network, and it's being held in Wauwatosa on August 23rd, which is a Tuesday. All parents, educators, administrators, board members, and community supporters of Wisconsin public schools and their students are invited to attend. It's a great opportunity to get connected, learn more about the issues facing our students and schools, and learn how we can be a part of the growing movement to support our public schools and the students they serve. There will be a full day of workshops and strategy breakouts led by Wisconsin Public Education Advocates and experts, featuring a special welcome by Dr. Evers, Superintendent of Public Instruction, and keynote presentations by John and Tasha Morgredge and Reverend Dr. William Barber II. Sessions will cover issues relating to school funding, advocating for schools that provide opportunity and access for all students, legislative advocacy to support local schools, and many other topics. Now, the Morgredges are natives of Wauwatosa, and they are avid supporters of public education. You may have heard this name over the past several years. They've donated $175 million to create the Fund for Wisconsin Scholars, an endowment which provides grants to low-income students attending one of Wisconsin's public colleges or universities. Tasha was a special education teacher, and they donated money to renovate and expand the education building on the UW-Madison campus, and they also gave $50 million for the Wisconsin Institutes of Discovery. That's the public-private partnership that houses two world-class biomedical research institutes and a public town center with educational offerings. Dr. William Barber is the founder of the Moral Mondays Movement in North Carolina, as well as being a Protestant minister and a political leader. Several Cape Members are planning to attend, and I hope that you'll consider joining us. Advanced registration is required, and I'm going to give you a paper with what I have just talked about on it, with a link to the site to register. I'll also email you the link so that you can read more about the summit, and if you're interested, you can complete the registration from home. The summit is open to everyone, and if there's anyone who is listening to this broadcast and is interested in learning more, or would like to attend, please feel free to contact me, Sandy Whistler. I'm listed in the Lake Mills phone book, and you can, please, give me a phone call. I'd be happy to share information with you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the event.
Sandy, can you give us the date again, please?
It's Tuesday, August 23rd. It will be all day in Wauwatosa, at Wauwatosa West High School, and lunch is included with the registration fee. There's also going to be a dinner in the evening at Hoyt Park Pool, which is a really great facility in Wauwatosa, and the Morgredges also contributed to the rebuilding of the pool at that park. So they are integral to the Wauwatosa community, to our state, and they are great supporters of public education. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
And then I'll quick and...
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. All right, consent agenda. We divided it into two motions. The first motion is to approve the minutes of the 13th, June 13th, regular board meeting and the special board meeting on June 13th. So I'll take a motion to that effect.
I move approval of the minutes of the June 13th, 2016, regular board meeting and the June 13th, 2016, special board meeting.
All right, I'll do the all in what?
Second.
Second. Yeah, I'll do all in favor, say aye, and then I'll take the abstentions after that. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
27th.
We're not there yet. We're still on the first, the 13th.
Eighteenth.
Okay, one abstention.
It says June 20th.
All right, the second proposed, or the second motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the June 27th, 2016, regular board meeting.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the minutes of the June 27th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Want me?
One abstention. All right. So, the vouchers and invoices and the treasurer's report.
I move to, do you want a motion, or?
Mm-hmm. I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $614,861.27 for the month of June 2016, and the treasurer's report from June 2016. Second.
Moved in second to approve the vouchers and invoices and the treasurer's report. Any questions or comments on those?
Anything we need to know?
Just the treasurer's report that I have, this time is not complete for the year yet, because we have to go through the reconciliation process, and so I'll present probably two treasurer's reports next time, one for the first month of this new year, and then hopefully the final one after the audit's done in August, so.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, roll call, please.
Donna Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNperio? Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Board reports, facilities report, Mr. DiNperio.
As you are probably aware, that there is a remodeling project going on here at the high school, and that primarily involved heating, ventilating, and air conditioning work. I had an opportunity to tour the facility recently, and all the major equipment is on-site. It's been placed, the rooftop units have been placed on the roof. They are probably not hooked up as yet. The existing boiler was removed, the old boiler, and a new boiler has been placed in the boiler room, and they're working on the piping and the putting in pumps and that sort of thing at this point. In addition, work for the relocation of the fume hood and the chemistry lab, that work is progressing very nicely. One of the things that has come up during this construction project, and it was discussed at some of the construction meetings, and contractors as well as staff had noted that we have a number of doors and windows on the east side of this existing building down at the lower level, kind of in the courtyard area. Those doors and windows are all a part of the original building and have deteriorated quite severely, so they're posing, they're ill-fitting, and they pose some security issues, and they're obviously not so great for energy conservation either. I understood that these were discussed previously and had not been, had not made some of the priority lists in the past capital expenditures that were done over the summer. But it seems like there's an opportunity to take advantage of the project going on at the present time. The budget for that project is very favorable. We approved approximately 600, or excuse me, $900,000, over $900,000 at our March meeting, which included a contingency fund of some $78,000. It's my understanding that the contingency has not been, no funds have been spent against that. We are past the point of surprises in the building. The things that have been, bad things that have been opened up have been found, and things were not as bad as first anticipated. Some of the allowances that the contractor had put in have not had to have been spent. They've put together a budget for the replacement of these doors. There are four doors. I don't know if any of you have seen some of the doors and windows in the back. They're kind of an unusual configuration of doors and windows. There's a window up on, a full window about the same size as a door above the doors. And so they're looking at replacing those in some of the instances where there are windows to simply use masonry and fill those in. One of the unhappy surprises was that asbestos was determined to be in the caulking that was used on these doors and windows, so that moved the needle a little bit. Anyway, at the end of the day, the cost for doing those is approximately $48,000. It seems like it makes some sense to incorporate those while people are on the job. There may be some economies of scale. It is, represents a change in scope, and I think that it's reasonable to get those items done. So I guess it's my recommendation that we, on the basis of a consensus, agree to modify that scope of work and incorporate with no change to the budget those particular items. If there's any objection to that, the other alternative would be that those could be included with this year's capital expenditure projects that were budgeted in our preliminary budget. It would be better to do it sooner than later, but, so I'm asking if there's, if we have objections or comments or whatever.
So at this point, we want to use the contingency fund? That hasn't been tapped yet?
Correct.
To do the doors. Is there any objection to that?
No, I have a question, but no objection.
Four doors, three windows, and blocking up another door.
Yes.
Okay. The only question I have is, so what you just said probably kind of answers that, but if, so we're not blocking out any windows, it's just a door? And does it affect any natural light coming into the spaces? Is it gonna make it darker in those spaces? That's all.
No, the door that is getting blocked up is in the weight room, and several years ago, a double door was put in. This is the original door that is, that is going to be blocked up, as well as the window, the window above it. There are other windows in that, in that particular space.
Okay.
Any other questions, or any objections to that?
No.
Okay. Okay, we'll move forward on that. Correspondents, Dr. Delaney, thank you.
Three thank you notes. Thank you so much for the beautiful flower. My mother loved flowers, and thank you for remembering my mother, and this comes from the family of Ruby Redkey. The second one, dear Lake Mills Board of Education, I would like to thank you for the generous gift certificate to Countryside Jewelry and the beautiful flowers for my retirement. I also want to thank you for your support during my 37 years at the district office. It was a pleasure working with all of you. Sincerely, Patty Wagner. And this one from Dean Sanders, school board members, thank you for the gift certificate to the Edgewater Supper Club. I will take advantage of it. Thanks again for everything that you do for the children of our district.
Okay, thank you. Administrative reports, Mrs. Silverd.
Good evening. Lots of work going on in our office on the curriculum side of things. We have finished year two, no, sorry, we have started year two, which, for the 2016-17 year, with the areas of math and pupil services. So we have about 23 staff that have been spending a lot of time within this wing of the building, working collaboratively to write their scope and sequence and curriculum maps. And they have probably about 12 hours of work done into that process, and they have about another 12 hours to go, so they're about halfway done. Feeling the stress of making sure they're writing good enduring understandings and essential questions. And then today, we started with, I feel like it's the leftovers group. It's an interesting group of staff, and I don't mean that in a bad way. I just mean that they don't have big departments. It's the business department, the ag department, librarians, tech ed, the fax, and PE and health. So it's a bunch of different teachers who have different core subjects that they're going to be writing scope and sequences on, but they were really exploring, what does it mean to understand today? So a big topic, but we'll get into enduring understandings and essential questions and then differentiation within the next couple of weeks. That's about it.
Questions? Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening. I just have a couple of updates for you. First is on the webpage. We are in the process of having CMS for Schools transfer our current webpage over to the new website. They sent us some preliminary images of what the new site is going to be looking, will look like with our colors, our logos, our banners. So we've submitted that for approval, and they'll begin the task of bringing everything from the old site over to the new site, still looking at that deadline of August 1st to have this project completed. And my other updates are just some of our action teams that have been meeting over the summer. Our math team is looking to review our individual profiles of progress. These are reports that go home to family members. The ones that we used last year that came with our program were not very user-friendly for parents. There were redundancies in the information that was being sent home, so this team has come together to streamline that material that will be going home for feedback to our families. Our lit action team has also met in a similar purpose. They're looking at a report card. Our kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers are looking at the foundational work that our readers do and how to provide information home for our parents on how their young readers are doing. And then in third and fourth grade, looking at something called reading progressions, so looking at how our readers are progressing through their units of study and the big ideas that align to our curriculum. So all of those are in the works that our teachers are working on this summer. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a request. In transferring data to the new website, could you see that the current long-range facilities plan resides on our new website?
Yes.
Because what we, what we had was a very old one.
That was kind of along the lines of my question, too. Did they, did they provide kind of a recommended architecture for the site beforehand and to identify holes, because there are a lot of holes in the old site? Right. We work collectively with CMS for Schools and with Boston Associates, and is an administrative team coming together to look at several different samples of exemplar websites to make sure that the template that we're using and the formatting that we're using is more user-friendly with less of those gaps that you speak of. Okay. When you speak of formatting, it's not typeface necessarily, it's the architecture of the site? Okay.
And then the other thing that we did is we went through and we assigned each of those areas to someone, so we have a really extensive matrix of who's responsible for what within the website, and that's a whole new level of accountability that we haven't had before.
Okay. Can regular people recommend things to be on the website, or is it just what the school wants?
Oh, I'm, we're always interested in feedback.
Okay, do people know that?
It's a good question.
Is there a feedback button? Let me check comments. Yeah.
There was that other thing, too, about, remember, we talked about maybe having a page, because the community likes to support the schools if they see something's broken or something's missing or whatever, or something needs attention, you know?
Yeah, let's look to see where that comment button is.
Any else?
Not live comments, because those go bad, but they submit something.
Right, right, right. A suggestion box, virtually.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Bauer.
I have been gone for the last two weeks, and everything seemed to function in my absence, although maybe not a lot of progression on things. We did go through, before I left, all the changes in the rooms, and some of that stuff has been completed while I was gone, so looking around the building right now, it feels like things are getting settled, and everybody knows where they're going to be and how things are going to look, so that's good. Also, I, before I left, posted Megan's position at the elementary school, so the secretary two position at the middle school, and right now, we have, just so people are aware, 60 applicants for that position. So we will be interviewing probably late next week. All right, any questions for me?
That's good, thanks.
Thank you.
Now, we now have another first tonight, too. We have Mr. Vogel, who is our new high school principal. So welcome. Now we get to hear what he has to say. The pressure's on.
All right, pressure. Well, again, I wanted to thank the board, Ms. Strike, for the opportunity to be here and to be in this position. I am truly honored and very humbled to step in Pam's, Pam's role. Glad to be back in the community, which I live and I love, and I'm excited. It's been an awesome first week and busy, and, but ready to get rolling. Just a couple of updates. I believe Ms. Strike, in June, talked about the CAP program, which is the Crossroads Two Alternative Program that's going to be hosted by Johnson Creek. At our last board meeting at Creek on June 27th, our board approved the program, and kind of the next steps, I met with Neil Connell, who's the new principal at Johnson Creek, last week. Just got a message from him that we look to interview some candidates next Tuesday, July 19th, and that's kind of the next process. And after the teacher's hired, you know, there needs to be, you know, some discussion on the curriculum itself, the competencies as related to Lake Mills and Johnson Creek, and of course, you know, within each department and both schools on, you know, what students might fit that, that alternative program. So those are kind of the next steps with, with CAP. One last thing, the advanced placement results for Lake Mills High School were released in the last several days. Just a reminder that, a little different where I come from, as far as in Johnson Creek, anyone can take AP classes here in Lake Mills. There were 69 exams in seven different AP courses, and there was nearly almost 70% passage rate with a score of three or better, which is slightly about four or five percentage points higher than the 14, 15 state average. And one thing new from talking with Ms. Strike is there was five, five scores. The AP exams are rated one through five, as far as, three is kind of considered a passing score. Five is the highest, and I don't believe there were many fives recently in talking to Pam, and they were five this past, past year, three in Calculus AB, one in Calculus BC, and one in Government and Politics. So, good stuff.
Good. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Deeb.
Good evening. A couple of things. I've been working this week with the auditors, started this week, working on reconciliations, and that's going very well. We're looking to finish up preliminary audit work this next week, and then our regular main audit would be the first week of August. And so far, so good. There's no surprises, and looks in good shape, and I think that Baker Tilly's an outstanding auditor to be working with, so I'm very happy to be working with them. We also have coming up at the end of this month, the annual meeting and the budget meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, we said the 25th, that's Monday, and 7:15 for the budget meeting, and 7:30 for the annual meeting?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock for the annual meeting, okay. Other than that, like I said, I've just been working hard, trying to close off the year, and that certainly is our busiest month, so.
7:15 and 8 o'clock for the annual meeting.
When will we be able to pick up our annual meeting booklet?
Soon as I have it completed, so.
Which is hard to do.
Like I said, I haven't had a timeline. Usually, I just present that at the annual meeting, so the first, I'm talking to you, I will have it done ahead of time as soon as I can, if I finish with the auditors this week, so. We're anticipating, hopefully finishing up this week, Wednesday, and then off Thursday or Friday to work on that and get that done and get that out, so.
Thank you.
I'm hoping.
Okay. Mrs. Strike.
Okay. First on the list, to follow up from last month, there was a question about, if we had any data about open enrollment out. And so in front of you, there is just a brief chart with information provided by Ms. Punzel, who handles all of the open enrollment. So you can see the number of open enrollment applications out for the last three years and some reasons that we know of. We don't interview people as they exit, but often they offer us that information, and sometimes it comes out in the process. So just kind of running down the list for the listening audience, most of the students have never been enrolled in this district, they've never attended in this district, so maybe they're going to school someplace else, bought a house in Lake Mills, wanted to continue going where they had, where they lived. In the last couple of years, we had some families choose virtual schools, and what's interesting about that is they were students who were homeschooled who went into a virtual school, so they didn't come out of our school into a virtual, because, as you know, we have a virtual school, our Jedi school. And whenever we get information like that, we do reach out to them and explain that we do have the Jedi, and they're eligible to be members of that, and so we do reach out to them. Things like attending the school district where their parents employed, and choosing, choosing an alternative school, because we didn't have one of those. Parents' work schedule or supervision led to where the student needed to go to school, returning to the school of origin, attending where a sibling attends, that would be for maybe a blended family. And we have one case where we were never made aware of what the reason was. In the past, some reasons that had been cited were swim team, custody agreements have come up, sometimes in custody cases, people pick neutral sites. And then we have seen many situations, especially in 4K, enrolling in and enrolling out that are involved in childcare kinds of situations, so that's the most up-to-date information we have.
Can I ask you a question?
Okay.
So, so it's 25 minus the 17 that never attended, right?
Yes.
Okay, that leaves you eight, and the eight are accounted for in this number down here, the two, the three, the one, and the two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I wasn't here for this, but I've kind of been interested in this a while. We used to get a complete report from Wendy about, and you've got people going out, but how many people are coming in?
Okay.
And also, it says here, just, it says total new applicants out.
Right.
There could be other kids going out that aren't new.
Right.
How many of those are there?
Okay, I don't, I-
See, I don't know those either, but I was wondering if maybe you could check sometime what Wendy gave us, because she used to have, and how it figured into the enrollment report. She'd usually have it when she'd list, you know, how many kids are in first grade and second and all that stuff. That's usually when it would appear.
So you liked that format that she used?
I did.
Okay.
I thought that was, it gave a clear picture in how it affected our budget, because it does affect our budget.
Sure.
Donna, was that broken down by school or by grade, too? That was my other question.
Oh, it was done, it was done by school, but it could easily be done by grade.
Sure.
And then sometimes she'd tell us where kids were going, you know, and where kids were coming from, just give us ideas of that.
Sure.
But mostly the impact that it had on our, our budget.
All right.
Can we find that out through?
Sure. That's all. We have all that. So speaking of Mrs. Punzel, because she put this together, I wanted to remind you, I think it's been brought up recently, that Mrs. Punzel, we've been kind of struggling to come up with a job title for her, because she has an enormous job- to come up with a job title for her, because she has an enormous job, but it all seems to be based on student, around student data. And so, I think we're looking at her title to be Student Data Manager. She does all the state and federal reporting, she does enrollment, she does basically anything to do with our Skyward system. She is a master, and actually, a consultant to Skyward. So, she has a huge job, and one of the things that we've done now is we have moved her over to the district office, and as a family wants to enroll in our district, we're going to have them meet directly with her. And that might seem kind of strange, because that's departing from what we've done before, but this doesn't, doesn't mean that families aren't going to the schools and having tours and all those things, but the paperwork and the enrollment process is so complicated, especially because we have complicated families, we have complicated state reporting. Inevitably, in every enrollment, there is a call made to Roseanne Punzel to try to help with the process, and so, we're going to try to streamline that, make it as worry-free for families, a one-stop shop, she can answer all the questions, handle all of the, if there's homeless issues, if there's free and reduced applications, if there's a need for any other services, that's just going to be in one confidential area in the district office managed by one person. And she has moved over to the district office, and that process has started, and I think yesterday, she enrolled six new kids from four families, and today, there were people in her office all day, so business is good.
Is she the homeless coordinator? Who's the homeless coordinator for our district?
Ms. Sebrud is the homeless coordinator.
Okay, so if we have homeless kids living next door to us, we should call her?
Yes, we should be made aware of that situation.
Do we have a, some kind of packet or something that we give the new parents?
Right.
Yes.
That's what I wondered.
Yes.
Do we have, you know, contributions from the community for that?
Yeah, that's a good point.
What do you mean by a packet?
Well, I'm thinking, you know, it would be good advertising for some of the businesses in town, to have a little flyer or something that would go home with them.
No, we don't have that. We have packets of information about our school and about all those kinds of things. The other thing that we are working on is a print piece, a very professionally-done print piece, that was a recommendation from David Bossen Associates, and within that packet will include all of the kind of demographic information, awards, achievements, contact information for each school within that. And so, that, we're working on that as well. That's part of his contract, to make sure that that's complete.
I'm just thinking if they were given the opportunity.
Your resource.
That they would, you know, it's another thing to do, but they would provide that information, be, you know, readily provide that.
Sure.
I've been in districts where they do that, Rick, and people liked it.
Yeah.
Same way with new teachers.
Welcome, Megan.
Yeah, like new teachers, too.
We did that last year for new teachers, and Megan will be doing that again this year. Didn't really tell her that yet, but.
Do we also provide them with information, like from the county, like resources from the county for families in need? Do we have, do we have, has the county provided us with that kind of information that we can hand out, so that they don't have to do any guesswork, and it's like all right there when they come to us?
There's a book called Where to Find, and it's a resource guide, you know, you look at childcare, you look at all the different topics, and it's a where, where to find, but that's a great idea, we should put that into Roseanne's office.
Do you have a bilingual person on call?
Like, you know.
Yes.
Any kind of, like, services that the county will provide for families in need?
Yep, we have that. We have those books, that's a great thing to know.
Okay.
Great. And then, lastly, I just wanted to.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then, also including if we're going to continue that backpack program?
Yes, we are.
To put that in there as well.
Great ideas. I have one more point I wanted to just bring up about, I wanted to talk to you about the possibility of having a board retreat facilitated by Bob Butler. I know that you've done those in the past, but I don't think we've done one since Ms. Davies has been here, and certainly not since I've been involved, and I spoke to Bob Butler, and he would be available at different times, depending upon your schedules, and topics that we kind of talked about are the roles and responsibilities of the board in working with me, communication between all of us, the potential use of board docs as a management of all this paper and all these documents. And he recommended reviewing what's considered a public record, functioning as a team, and then, that would also be a really great time for us to work on goals for 2016, 17. So, I'll leave that to you, and I can help facilitate that with Mr. Butler.
Okay, do you have dates for us, or?
I do not. He said he was pretty open in August.
Can you get dates and then send it out, you know, to us?
Well, I think, what time, what would work best for?
I don't know.
Evenings, daytime, small pieces rather than a chunk of time.
I don't know, you know, would, I like the late afternoon, but I.
Yeah, daytime is better for me, because I can get childcare then, and I have three.
Yeah.
So, but.
Daytime, like when?
Afternoons are fine, mornings are fine. Doesn't matter.
I mean, like, like, four to seven, is that possibility, or? Or not, is that too late? I mean.
M A T C starts in mid, or like the third week of August, so we start teaching. When do you guys start? But take that into consideration, but later evening or afternoon?
Late afternoon?
No?
I mean, I can do it. My preference would be like one. No?
Depending upon teaching schedule for me, anyway, and I don't know when Whitewater starts.
Well, I can be pretty flexible depending upon the specific day.
Yeah.
Might mess up the golf.
Rick, every day is Saturday.
Donna, what do you, what do you?
Well, I'm more flexible than Rachel, or some of the people that are going to work every day. Can we have suggestions that all into the agenda?
Sure.
Because I think we need to review again the open meeting law.
Right.
You know, that we haven't talked about. And also, the other thing is, I like public records. We haven't talked for a long time about the posting of meetings and the keeping of meeting minutes for committees, which he talked about a long time ago when he was here. You won't read that off.
All right, well, let's go back to the time. When, does time work, okay? Like, one o'clock? Yes, no?
Yeah.
One would be.
Depends on the day.
Donna's probably, maybe you and I can talk, and we can maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
If it's the first couple of weeks or whatever.
One to four?
One to four, early August.
Early August, yeah.
Early August, you're saying? I don't know about that, I'll have to see. It's okay.
Okay.
Time to Bob and see what dates are available, and we'll go from there.
Where would we do this?
Great. Where would you like to do it?
Well, we probably can't, probably can't go like out of state.
What, Vegas? No Vegas? Just kidding.
You know, I don't know, what would, you know, I think we need to have a reasonably good setting, you know, to do this, and I'm not sure this room is. I don't, you know, this never feels that great. I don't know.
And with the construction, too, it's.
Well, now, you can't see the people down there.
Right, yeah, we need, we need to have something where we can, where we can interact and see each other and do that, and I'm not sure where that is either, but, anyway.
Okay, well, maybe Dr. Mason, I can work on that.
I can bring up the problem, and somebody else can do the solution.
Absolutely.
Right.
Have you been to my meetings?
But, I mean, it does, it makes it more social.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, I want to get at the three goals. We have three goals typically. Yes, we do. We have a continuation of the ones last year, but we need to revamp those for this year, because there was one on facilities in the building of the school.
Do those align to the, all the work that we did?
What, a facility one?
Yes, last year.
I know it, it never goes away, Rick.
No, well, it does, you know, because that was the new school, but we need to update them, basically, okay? So, we can do that at that retreat, and then, everything else kind of filters out. Mrs. Strike's goals, pigeonhole into those, our goals, and then, the principals, you know, have the same kind of goals, and it works its way down, so. So, it begins at us, it begins with us.
They have to align with the mission, vision, and beliefs, all of that stuff, too, because that was part of what we worked on as well.
Yes, yes. Okay, action items. You want to comment on the first one, and then, we'll take a motion?
Okay. As I understand, the information has trickled to you in different parcels, and I apologize to you about that, about the professional staff compensation proposal. And within your packet, there is information, and I tried to create an executive summary to talk about the history, where we've been, why we formed this committee, to look at staff compensation. I mentioned team members, the meeting dates, the goals of the system, and then, some of the key points, and this was all taken from Mr. Butler's presentation, so, I believe you were all here that night, except I think that you were gone that night. And so, this is kind of a repeat of the information that you had heard. Also, you've been provided with the handbook materials that would accompany this and explain that. Within those handbooks, you'll see there's a lot of highlighted areas. Those are areas that need to have page numbers and references placed into them, and that's when it will be integrated into the complete handbook. You've, I've also shared with you the proposed schedule itself. Last meeting, we shared without names, how, what it looked like when we moved people from their current schedule to the new schedule. So, I would be open to either getting this on the table and discussing it that way, or if you just want to ask me questions, if there's anything that I can get you more information about, however you'd like to proceed.
As a member of the committee that worked on this, I would move that the board approve the professional staff compensation proposal for implementation in the 2016, 17 school year.
Would second that?
Okay, would second it to approve the new staff compensation model proposal. Questions? Comments on that?
One of the concerns was its affordability, so that, I mean, the numbers have been, we've kind of looked it through, and this would work for the current upcoming year?
Yes, yeah. My question is, at some point, I'd like to see the actual numbers of teachers for staff that falls, where they're going to fall into, because that's where you could see a jump, the cost is more, say, there's a lot in the top, and they'll make the next jump up to the next level. I mean, that could be a little more cost in that year, so I'd like to see kind of what they fall, and that's the next step, is to look at that, but.
And our spreadsheet projects out three years, so that you can get that information.
That'd be nice to have.
So, a lot of work went on there, you worked on it for about a year, is that correct?
At least a half a year. At least, as a committee.
As a committee.
Yeah.
And I might add that I've already received some requests for the, for the new compensation schedule from other districts.
And I have now, too.
And I think it's one of the best that I've seen in the states so far, so. Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Well, it just seemed to me that as we went through this, that this, this was a fairly straightforward schedule, and it was pretty easy to understand, and it had that predictability that I think is so important for our staff, for our employees to understand. We had a goal of attempting to elevate our starting salary, which this does reflect. We would have preferred it to be higher, but that just, that just wouldn't work. It is possible, as we go through from year to year, that the schedule, besides the people moving from one level to the next, depending upon the budget situation, this, this can increase, the whole thing can go up a half a percent, or a quarter of a percent, or one percent, or whatever. So, there's that opportunity to elevate that as well, along with every, I mean, everybody would be elevated, and that's all. And it also, I think, should silence some of the critics that say, well, you know, you just, all you have to do is be here. Well, you don't just have to be here, there are certain things that you need to accomplish as an employee, so, I don't know, I, I like it.
I like that we're compensating, having a master's degree, too, so we're also kind of encouraging people to go beyond the bachelor's level if they choose to do so and be compensated accordingly for that.
And also, if I, if I read it correctly, they are compensated, or can be compensated for national board certification also. Any other questions?
Yes.
Rachel?
So, the very top grandfathered level has a number, and it says compensation level increase zero, but then, it has a stipend involved. Is, this is our very top right now, is it not? This number, or is it, that's minus the stipend is what our number is right now? I didn't find my old schedule right before I came. And then, how does that work? Because the other ones say have level increases of the same dollar amount as that stipend, however, this one, I'm assuming, then would just go up by the percent if we give, you know, if a percent were given to everybody, is that correct?
The stipend would not go on the base, the stipend would be a one-time, a one-time payment separate from the base, so the base salary would always stay the same, and the stipend would be, would be provided on an annual basis.
Okay, so they would get it every, okay, every year?
Correct.
Okay.
But it would not, it would, the base would stay, stay the same.
And the base would not increase with a percent increase for the rest of the staff?
That could, that could, yes.
All right, and so, the stipend is sort of like, it would be counted kind of like a bonus, kind of, like, like the traditional, or is it counted, is it, is it different in education?
These are people that moved all the way through the schedule already.
Right.
And they're at the very top.
Right.
Are you asking accounting-wise, how it's?
Yeah, you know, like, so, for example, if you're in business and you get a bonus, almost half of it goes to the government. That's what I'm asking you, is it treated the same way tax-wise, or is this treated as pay?
It would be, well, that's a good question, because stipend, it would be taxable, it would be taxable stipend.
Right.
You could do it either way, but it would be a taxable stipend if we did a thousand dollars a year. It's kind of like the longevity pay that we have for people, it's not handled the same way.
Right, so, well, I didn't know how that was handled. Is it handled as a lump sum, in essence, like a bonus, so it is taxed more heavily than? Okay, more heavily than if it were in their salary?
More heavily at the time of receipt.
At the time of receipt, yeah.
So, if you're.
Stipend's not the best term, like, because you get a little confused with our OPEP kind of stipend, it's a little, it's different than that, it's more of a longevity.
So, if you're here for a year, let's say you're here for a year, and you get a good evaluation from your principal, but you don't take any courses, or you don't do anything, what is the minimum raise, again, everybody, if you just?
You'd move one, one sub-level.
It'd be a thousand dollars.
It'd be a thousand dollars, which, in essence, is kind of like the old step, really, right?
Kind of, except.
Kind of?
Except, it seems you get stuck in that box, you don't move up to the next box unless you do those extra things.
Oh, yeah, that's right, but then, the next year, you, you do a good job, you get a good evaluation, but you don't go to school and you don't do these things, then you will get another thousand-dollar raise. That's why I'm asking, because that's the old step concept.
But you won't at the top of that box, right?
I understand that, you won't move to the next level.
So, you wouldn't get that kind of a bump?
No, but you'd keep getting your thousand dollars if you're.
As long as you did.
In like five years.
Five years maximum, depending upon where you start.
So, but at the end of that five years, you would stay at that same, only the increase that was provided to all staff would be available to you, you wouldn't move out of that level unless you had accumulated the forty points and had the successful evaluation.
I think it's, it can be sustained.
Okay, any other questions?
It's taken into account in terms, yeah, okay, professional development.
All right. Let's vote. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiBirro?
Aye.
Donna Tambo?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of concession stand at Wallace Park. Comment on that?
I can comment.
Yeah, why don't you?
This, this came up during a facilities committee meeting in early June, and the city is in the process of planning the construction of a concession stand, combination with restrooms and. and storage facilities at Wallace Park, where our recreation program utilizes the baseball, softball, little league fields. And at the, at the time, there was a discussion about the school district sharing and the cost of this construction. One of the benefits, not only from being a good citizen, is that the rec department would be able to operate the concession stand there and have storage in that particular building. And so, initially, the city has asked for a $50,000 donation, which would be coming from our Fund 80. And it's my understanding that there was a, there was a need to disperse some of those funds, as that particular fund balance had gotten to a level that was not considered appropriate. And so, the 50 would come from that fund. Now, we understood just today that one of the other donors' situation has changed, and it may be necessary for the city to come back and ask for some additional funding. If they do, we'll deal with it when that, when that occurs. But the motion that would be in front of the board this evening is for the $50,000, based on the understanding of what the district is going to be able to utilize that facility for.
Will take a motion?
I move the board appropriate $50,000 from Fund 80 for the construction of a concession stand at Wallace Park by the City of Lake Mills, with the understanding that the district will have the exclusive right to sell concessions at the stand forever. The Lake Mills Recreation Department will also have the right to store equipment at the facility.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the $50,000 from Fund 80. Questions?
I have a comment. I want to make a comment for the motion. If you look on the budget, the preliminary budget that was handed out to us at the last meeting, if you look under Fund 80, right now, we have a fund balance there in '15, '16 of $170,000, and it's projected next year to be at $192,900. So, we have ample funds to afford this project at this time.
Uh huh. Any other questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Robert DePiero?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of elementary school student handbook.
Ms. Thompson shared that handbook with you in May, and she's here to answer any questions, if there were any.
Can we have a motion, please, first?
I move the board approve the 2016-17 elementary school student handbook.
Second? Moved and seconded to approve the elementary handbook. Any questions, comments on that? You got it in May to look over. It was great. Just outstanding. All right, seeing no comments, roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DePiero?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of middle school student handbook.
Which was also provided to you in May, and Ms. Bauer is here to answer any questions about that.
Motion, please.
I'll move the board approve the 2016-17 middle school student handbook.
Second?
Questions? Any comments? Roll call, please.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DePiero?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. There we go. Approval of enrollment analysis proposal. Do you want to speak to that, Bob, or?
In your packet, was the complete presentation proposal from MDR Consulting, and Mr. DePiero-
A little background in that?
Well, first, why don't I make the motion to accept a proposal from MD Ruffing Consulting for a fee not to exceed a $15,500.
Second?
Okay. Background, give us a little background on that.
Okay, it's discussed briefly at our June meeting. As we have discussed with our consultants, our long-range facilities plan, particularly how we're looking at this building and how we will be able to function in the future, the idea came up that perhaps we needed some better enrollment projections. This particular consulting firm has done work with our other consultants as well for a number of school districts in the state of Wisconsin, many in this area, some, I think Sauk Prairie was one that might be comparable in our size. But it goes beyond simply looking at birth figures, looks at housing and in-and-out migration and a whole host of things. And it was our thinking that, you know, as we're looking at making improvements in this building, this would be another way to test assumptions, verify assumptions, or change them. And so, we thought that this would be a valuable thing to do. There is money within the budget for '16-17, under the, some of the planning functions that could accommodate these costs.
All right, questions on that?
When we did the elementary school, we had a study done, right? Is that correct? Rachel, you were in the committee. Was there an enrollment study done?
We didn't, I don't think there was a study per se, but we did have all the data back to like the 1980s, I think. So, we could see, because the perception was always, you know, even when I was in school and after, the thought was, at some point, we're going to meld and be a suburb of Madison, you know, growth is just going to explode. But it hasn't happened. However, we have had some recent bubbles, I think, that were unexpected after we looked at that, that data. But, but we hadn't looked at housing, and I think at that time, housing had slowed. We were kind of in a slump in the economy, so.
And the other thing we did was, when we were talking about selling this property, remember, didn't we have Myron or somebody was, along with Dean, do some kind of, in the city, do some kind of enrollment? And they did some projections. The study, the city had a study, didn't they, did they?
The last, at one of the last meetings, Mr. Sanders said that he compiled information himself, that we hadn't had a consulting firm do an enrollment.
Yeah, I'm not asking about that, I'm asking about what the city guys-
That was primarily land use in the city's, the city's master plan, as well as their current zoning, as they were identifying potential areas that could grow residentially, as well as the areas that would be available for businesses. And so, at that point, Myron did a series of overlays on the city, which helped us to see if we needed an alternate site.
Where would be?
Where might make the most sense to do that.
So, they did a little bit.
Yeah, I don't think that that did, I don't think that that really looked at enrollment per se, no.
How helpful, I mean, it's, there's a lot of, I know that, you know, there's data, and then there's data, and then, you know, and then things change. Do you know what I mean? So, how helpful have the districts that have done this, do we know, you know, how helpful they've found it, and how, I don't want to say accurate, but, you know, pretty close to, you know, helping them anticipate facility needs?
Yeah, I think they were the ones that are doing or did Sun Prairie, that is correct.
Right, and I see that in here.
Yeah, Sun Prairie has a master plan that's laid out there now, you know, when an elementary needs to be built, when a new high school needs to be built, and they found it very reliable. And the thing is, there's a couple ways of going at this, and traditionally, you look at birth rates, which is totally unreliable in the long term, you know?
Totally what, Rick?
Birth rates.
Unreliable or reliable?
Unreliable, because they move in and out and go around and everything. But what I like about this is they're going to work with the city, and they're going to work with the construction companies, too, as, you know, and they know if something's going to open up potentially before some of the other people know that. So, I think that'll be helpful.
And I think, Rachel, to your point, the work that they did for Sun Prairie, and they would do for us as well, they use a 15-year planning horizon, and the milestone dates, the 5, 10, and 15, and it was our understanding that they were pretty accurate on the five-year deal, that the enrollments were what, pretty much what they thought they were going to be after five years.
Okay.
And that, as you may have read in the paper, Sun Prairie is looking to build a new high school, and that's based on, they're relying on those kinds of, that kind of data.
My kind of background in this, in these enrollment projections, has been what Bob said, for the short term, you can project, you know, the five years, but to get real longitudinal data, they're not real reliable and valid. The only thing that's really reliable and valid, and these people will use it, too, it's just how much, matriculation. And that's where you just take what you got, and you keep rolling them up. That's, that used to be the only thing you could do.
It goes beyond that, they're going to more in-depth. Okay, any other questions on that? All right, roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DePiero?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
No.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Yes, and that passes four to one. All right, approval of para educator resignations.
We have two this month, would you like for me to read their letters, or?
If you would like to, sure.
Okay. Our first one is from Josh Hammer. I have decided to, oh, excuse me, I, oh, here we go, "I have decided to start another job. I will not be back to school in the fall. I wanted to thank you for helping me in my job as a para. It was a very enjoyable, rewarding experience. I will always look back with fond, very fond memories." And from Brenda Wiesa, "I regret to inform you that I will not be returning to my special education para educator position for the 2016-17 school year."
Hey, can I have a motion, please?
I move the board accept the resignations of Mr. Josh Hammer and Ms. Brenda Wiesa as para educators for the school district, and thank them for their time and years of service within the district.
Second?
Second.
Mr. DePiero seconded. Questions or comments on that? Any?
Are we still doing exit interviews, or is, what's the status?
We are, we?
Exit interviews?
I have, I will do whatever you want of me. I believe that the individual that had done it in the past is no longer going to be doing those for us, so that we'd have to find another-
Somebody else to do it?
Someone else to do it.
That was my understanding as well, that he, he did not wish to continue.
Right.
That's what I understood.
Would you like for me to investigate somebody else to do that?
Yes.
Yes?
Okay, I'm okay.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Roll call, please.
Robert DePiero?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular resignations.
We have two of these as well. First one's from Jeff Hagstrom. It is with very mixed emotions that I write this letter of resignation from being the head coach of the Lake Mills girls soccer position. Being the girls soccer coach for the past eight years has been a life-changing experience for me. I am always in awe of how remarkable these young student athletes come in to our program as freshmen, and by their graduation, four years later, they leave as wonderful people and strong, determined women. I'm stepping down so I can spend more time with my growing family, as I feel I'm missing out on too much being gone night after night. I hope to someday return to the program when the time is right. Again, thank you to everyone involved that has made this such a positive experience for me, and ultimately, the girls, too. Sincerely, Jeff Hagstrom. And then, we just received notification that Tori Zastro would be resigning from the middle school volleyball position, so we will need a seventh-grade coach.
I move the board accept the resignation of Ms. Tori Zastro as eighth-grade volleyball coach, and Mr. Jeff Hagstrom as varsity girls soccer coach. Thank them for their service to the athletes and family of the district.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the resignations. Questions on that? Comments? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DePiero?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that's approved unanimously. Approval of professional staff contracts.
There are two this month, and I had the opportunity to sit in with Mr. Sanders as he did their second interviews, both just outstanding candidates. Ms. Caleb Binner, I believe you're saying, and Ms. Catherine Walsh, who is an alum of Lake Mills High School.
Okay, motion, please.
I move the board approve contracts for the following individuals for the 2016-17 school year, Ms. Caleb Binner, middle school teacher, Ms. Catherine Walsh, middle school teacher.
Second?
Mr. DePiero, again, second, beat out the next person in line. Any questions or comments?
The only question that I have, Ms. Reich, is, do we have any additional openings or positions that need to be filled?
At this time, we have a special education position at the high school. I will, at the end of the meeting, I was going to say that the, I received a letter late last week about a resignation, or a retirement, so that would be the second opening, I think. I think that's it for now.
Okay, thank you.
There's some para educator, part-time para educator openings, and then the secretary position at the middle school.
Retirement now, so not teaching next year?
Right.
Wow, okay.
Right.
Okay, roll call, please.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DePiero?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular contract.
We have information before you for the JV boys soccer coach position.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve a contract for JV boys soccer for Mr. Sean Kim for the 2016-17 school year.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the contract for JV boys soccer. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DePiero?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts?
Four interesting gifts this month, not just monetary gifts, but as you read through them, you'll see that some interesting items as well.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the following gifts, and thank the donors for their generous contributions to our school district, $250 from Summit Credit Union to the elementary school garden, an authentic Chinese kimono with all the accessories from Mrs. Laura Hahn to the high school drama department, a $300 donation from Mr. James Ordle to the soccer department for a portion of the new water wheel, and a donation of white oak from Dr. Rick Mason to the tech ed department valued at $330.
Moved and seconded to approve the gifts donated to the district this month, last month. Any questions, comments on that? Roll call, please.
Robert DePiero?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Four items for August.
First of all, a reminder, that we'll have the annual meeting and the budget hearing on Monday, July 25th. Following last year's pattern, the budget meeting will be at 7:15, and then the annual meeting will follow at 8 o'clock. We'll have that in the auditorium here at the high school. Some typical items, I know that fall into the agenda for August, we'll look at short-term borrowing. As I mentioned, we'll have one retirement that we'll want to act on, and if it's all right with everyone, I'd like to go ahead and post that, even though we weren't able to approve it tonight and get it on the agenda, we need to move.
Yeah, okay.
So, hopefully, we'll have two, two positions to approve, at least, at the August meeting.
Anything else for August?
If, potentially, we'll, might have our goals to approve if we can-
Perhaps.
-get our board retreat in before that.
All right, a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second?